I have a small house, people.
I guess so.
We are now recording and we are, we're still letting a few more people in. Bill's coming, okay?
Can't, can't people just mute themselves?
They can mute themselves during the public, when the public comes in, I generally did a full mute, but you can up and down.
Gotcha, I see it.
You can, but once I unlock you, but, but the ones that I've locked, I've locked just so that we didn't have a lot of static.
There's someone driving a truck somewhere.
For those that are waiting out, the public will have public comment will be part two in just a little bit. And we're just, I think all the board members are back in the room here and we are recording. And we are still on the March 24 regular meeting.
Okay, now I'll take over. Vern, you want me to take another roll call just to make sure?
Yes, yes, please do.
Okay. Make sure everybody is available. Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Brant?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Henning?
Yes.
And trustee Scotchy?
Yes.
Okay, all accounted for.
Okay. I would like to move to item 14 dot O, action out of executive session. I would like to have a motion for item 14 dot one, consideration of resolution 20 dash 28, appointment of legal counsel. Can I have a motion to, and I guess I'll say appointment of Tressler LLC, I think it is, LLP as legal counsel for the McHenry County Conservation District. Can I have a motion?
I'll move that we appoint Tressler LLP as our general counsel.
There are second.
I second. Okay, go ahead.
I second that.
Okay, Pat did, okay. Are you ready for a vote?
Ready for a vote, thank you.
Trustee Brant?
No.
Trustee Henning?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
No.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Scotchy?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of five to two.
Okay. Would everybody like to continue on with the last two items on the consent agenda? I mean, I'm sorry, the...
Are we pulling them up? I don't see it on the screen.
Screen forward, it says other board business 15.0?
No, I don't hear that.
No, your screens, it shows the first slide.
Yeah.
Really?
Yes.
You gotta go to the agenda.
All right, hold on a second. Let me go back here and see, because I'm... It will be right there. Continue on. You're on the project or the foundation.
15 dot O.
Right. Your screen.
Well, to move the board, no one's saying anything. 15, one, right?
Yep, you can read the motion if you'd like, Dave.
I would move to approve resolution 2029, acceptance of McHenry County Conservation District 2021 project list as is.
Is there a second? There a second?
No second. Can I have a motion to consideration of resolution number 2029, acceptance of McHenry County Conservation District fiscal year 2021 project list? And we need to discuss the project list.
I second that, or first it, or whatever I need to do to it.
Okay, you need to make a motion.
I make a mo, whatever you just said, Vern, I...
Well, wait a minute, what is different? Oh, wait a minute.
Dave says as is, and I think there needs somebody, we'd like to have a discussion.
They'd like to man, micromanage just a little bit more, so.
No, I don't think that's it at all.
It is.
So, go ahead, and I'm sorry, I guess I'm confused about, I would discuss anything, so go ahead and do what you need to do, so we can start discussing it. Yes, that would be great.
Well, I don't have the list in front of me, so I can't.
Would you like me to bring it up on the screen? I'm happy to share. Hold on a second. Is this the one we're gonna go through?
So you're moving, you're moving to discuss it. I will second, Linda.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay, got it. Is there, okay, um, since the motion is to discuss with the fiscal year 2021 project list, um, do you want a roll call vote, or you want a, all eyes, or, I mean, a ayes and nays?
Well, is anybody opposed to discussing this at this point?
No. Yeah, I am.
Okay, then we'll take a roll call. See, Henning?
You're, you're voting yes to discuss, no to move forward.
I didn't hear the name. Is it my name?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
I would like to discuss.
Yes. Trustee Cook?
Yes.
And trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brant?
No.
And trustee Scotchy?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Okay. Whoever would like to start and... And so we don't be competitive.
Anybody of the seven trustees, how many of you are professional fundraisers? I would say zero, right? So what I can't understand is, we heard Shawna say that she liked the list as it is. So we're gonna micromanage this list for some other reason than letting her do her job. This is a paragraph she wrote in her memo. "By keeping all projects on the list ensure, ensure flexibility. The expectation with the list is not MCCD will not fund, will raise every penny for every project, but it'll be used as a tool to inform fundraising strategies. A variety of project gives us the opportunity to speak to funders with specific interest to raise more funds based on the donor interest that solely targeting a slits a project can do." So it gives her more opportunities. And I do not understand why you, and I consider this micromanagement, just like not giving Elizabeth what she has always had the ability to do. I think this is wrong. Of this board, this is absolutely wrong.
Okay, well, that being said, I, I just had a couple of questions is all. Um, well, first, first was a statement that I'm disappointed in because of the circumstances that we couldn't get together with the foundation board. I think it would have been very good to have been able to get together and talk with them and, and each of us share ideas and where we wanted to go. That's unfortunate, and maybe I just need to make some phone calls, but I thought it would have been a, a nice evening that all of us could have gotten together.
Agreed.
And, and this, you know, it's just an unfortunate time that that's how, how things have worked. And I look forward to when things are back to normal and we can, we can get, get together with those, with that other board and figure out, you know, just how we want to work together. I, I see no problem with that. My, my other point, the only thing, and I'm sure that Shawna will take care of this, my point being is that I just hope we don't get 100 people, somebody that gives $100 to one project and then $100 to another project by somebody else, and so he else picks another project with having so many projects out there that all of them become partially funded, but none of them get finished. I'm sure Shawna will take that into, into account, and I just wanted to make that, that statement. I know she's not, I don't think she's here, so.
She is, she's here, and Kevin is here.
Is she there?
I'm on, yeah.
Okay, good.
And Kevin, hi, John.
How are you?
Kevin Ivers has joined as well.
Yeah.
And so that, that's, that's my only concern with a list this, this large, is that it gets too broken up and, and, and I want to make sure that we're not working towards finishing one project and the, the foundation doing something else. And so I, I think it just comes down to having a, you know, continually working towards a better communication and, and, and I think we're heading that way. And I appreciate that. And thank you for the memo and everything else that you sent. That was very good. And that's really, really all I had to, had to comment on.
So, and to that point, that's exactly, the second point that John said is exactly my feeling as well. So I just would like some clarification and not just giving $100 here, $100 there. And I would just like Shawna to address that, and I'm sure she will. But that, that was a big concern of mine. That was the biggest concern of mine. So, thank you, Shawna.
Yeah, of course. And I can easily address that concern. If I cut out, somebody let me know. My internet seems to be a little fritzy. Anybody who's gonna make a $100 gift to the foundation is probably not gonna be asked to contribute to any specific project. If we have a crowd rise sort of initiative, that would probably be something that the board has deemed like priority number one, similar to the Illinois Clean Energy thing that's going on. That's our big crowdfunding initiative. It's got a match tied to it. People can contribute 100 bucks. For the most part, though, these are projects that we would approach mid-level or major donors to help fund. So it wouldn't be trying to nickel and dime people to raise whatever the total cost is for most of these projects. Most of these would be grants, corporate funds, things of that nature. And then my hope is that the foundation board, if we were to raise 75% of one of these projects and we needed to toss in an extra 25%, that then the foundation board makes the decision to do so out of that pool of general operating funds where people have contributed 100 bucks here and there.
Okay.
That makes, I was, I think that makes sense, because the whole idea of having a list is so that the foundation and their board, and Shawna in particular, her expertise could be looking at what can they push out that people will want to support. That's, that's, that's not something we're deciding, that's something they're deciding based on things that we are saying that we need. So that is completely in line with what I would have expected to be the case, that we're gonna just have a list of things that would be nice, you know, would be helpful, and they decide what is practical in terms of raising dollars.
And I'm sure Shawna, if, if we go down this list and for some reason one of them rises to the top of our to-do list, and we'd like to do it at a, at a, as that becoming our number one project, you would, you and Linda would definitely take that to that, to the foundation and see what kind of feedback came from them, so that we, we would have that discussion. And, you know, if we said, okay, we really want to do this right now versus, we could make that a top priority, or prioritize this list at some point in time if, if that became important to us. Or important to, or important to one of the people, you know, one of the staff members or something that, you know, or, or whoever, that this would be really what we want to do.
Absolutely. And one of the things in the memo that I sent was that the board had suggested that if you guys have between one and five projects you already see on this list that you deem to be district priorities right now, they would love that insight in order to inform their decision-making process.
And vice versa, if they, if they see something that they really fall in love with, they could come back to us and say, we really want to do this. How does it fit into your schedule? And did we really make this work? So I think it's all about the, the communication both ways, and I'm, I'm looking forward to that, that dialogue back and forth. So I look forward to what you, what you bring back to us also.
I'll jump in when, some appropriate time and just make one comment. If this is the appropriate time, I'll jump in.
I think there's no better time than now.
All right, so I wanted to thank you that I saw the pension loan obligation listed under other funding opportunities with, without a dollar amount listed. But with the suggestion that the foundation might find it easier to raise money for some other item in the district's budget that would free up funds that the district could then allocate towards the pension debt, pension debt. So I find this a, an avenue that, that seems attractive to me. And it requires input from the staff as to, well, okay, maybe we can put this onto the foundation's budget and have the monies that we have allocated to it put to this other worthy goal, the retirement of the pension loan. I don't have any specific dollar amounts for the next 12 months. I know that we've taken it from 4.3, and then we've allocated 0.5 and 1.4. So I think we have a balance of about 2.4 million that we will owe. So I would ask Elizabeth and the directors of the various departments to give serious consideration to seeing, to dialogue with Shawna and the foundation and see if there's a way to raise some real money. And, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars, up to a half a million dollars. I think that would be very significant, and I think it would be effort well spent. So thank you for hearing me out.
Any, any other comments from any other board members? Not hearing any. I'd like to comment. When we went through the, the budget for fiscal year 21, we had hard decisions to make. And we said we couldn't do things, and we would look down the road to do them. We also recognized that because of the levy, lack of levy, that next year's budget, the fiscal 22-year budget will be even more difficult than the fiscal year 21 budget. And I remember when this proposed process came up, I had said that I think it's the board's responsibility to take a look at the projects going over to the foundation, to do exactly what Bill and what John has been saying, is to where can we spend money to do the things we need to do at the district, and where can the foundation pick up these things that they support the district with? My other concern, and I'll say my other concern is, we're starting a brand-new process. I, I, I don't want to confuse people or overwhelm people. My suggestion was, and I still believe in this, that we should walk before we run, so we don't end up here a year later saying what happened to the 20-some projects that we thought we wanted the foundation to do. Where did they stand? Where's the paperwork? Who's doing what? Who agreed to what? We have not put one grant request, and I'm gonna call it a grant request, because that's the terminology Shawna has used for the form that would be used once they agreed to a, to a project. So it's a twofold process. The board has to agree on what they think they want the foundation to try to do for us based upon our budget issues. And then we have to come up with a process for them to understand and, and provide us the money in a, in a time that's appropriate to do the projects. So that's, I'm, I'm not trying to micromanage anybody.
Yes, you are.
Dave, can I have the floor?
I'll interject every once in a while.
I'm done. I'm done. I don't, I don't, Dave, I've tried to speak, treat you with respect. I asked that back. Thank you.
What has, I have a question. Has this, has this list as is gone over to the foundation that they've, they've looked at it, Shawna?
Yes, the entire board has looked at the list. And again, I want to stress that my board does not look to fund every one of these projects in the next fiscal year.
That'd be great if they...
Right? We, we look forward to the point when we're able to fund a project list of this size. But what it does, and what the foundation board recognizes its role is, is a tool to be able to speak to funders who may have specific interests. And also to reach out to grant funders who are going to fund specific types of projects. They've reviewed it, they've all given it the thumbs up. Obviously, if the district board feels like some of these do not fit with, are not in line with the upcoming fiscal year priorities, please remove them, because we don't want to consider funding something that isn't a desire of yours. But if they all are things that if you had funds for, you would give a thumbs up to, I implore you to leave them on there.
Okay, all right. So that's a, that's a very good point, Shawna, and I appreciate that. This is Carolyn. And Vern, I think that if you have some specific ideas about things that you feel are not in keeping with what you would like to see going forward, then I'd be happy to hear that. Because I am not really a fundraiser, my inclination, and that doesn't mean it's right or wrong, my inclination is to take what staff has identified as things that they could use and pushing it forward to Shawna and, and the board over there, and what they do to figure out what is desirable by people who actually want to contribute. But like Shawna said, and I'm fine with that, I'm perfectly fine with it. If somebody on this board has an item they really don't, are not comfortable with, no, let's take it off and then get the list over to them so they can do their thing. I'm not taking anything off. I mean, I would probably take the pension loan off based on Shawna's description. I don't think it's something that people will contribute to. I think we can take the money that we save by the projects that they fund and, and do it on the back end and get to the same place that Bill would like to get to. That's fine. But if anyone has something, then let's go ahead and, and deal with it. And so we can, we can push this forward to them.
Well, Carolyn, there is no pension fund in this document. It's not even in there.
Um, I don't, I thought it was.
It is. It's just the very end of the list. It was added following the Finance and Administration Committee meeting.
Other funding opportunities.
Can you see the screen, the Excel sheet?
Yes.
You can.
Okay, so it's, it's under number 37.
Correct. Yeah, it's there. So it is there. It's really up to the, it's really up to me, to the foundation, if they think they can push it. And what Shawna was saying, I don't see that as being the top priority. We can, we can do that on the back end. We have to make a decision if they're, and Vern, I'm perfectly fine if you feel that there's things that you would like to do. But otherwise, let's just, you know, make that decision. I don't know, you've taken a closer look. Maybe you have some ideas you could share.
What page is that?
I really, I really don't have anything to say, Lynn, thank you.
Good, because I'm perfectly fine with whatever anybody wants to push forward. I'm not a fundraiser. Leave it up to the foundation.
So, so I had had, you know, during my, Elizabeth here, some conversations of specific items that, that there were individuals had concerns with. This did come from our staff. These were ideas in the dollar amounts, right, are yet to still be vetted in, through a grant proposal that the staff will need to fill out and submit. So the board will have another opportunity. But I do think Shawna and the foundation board, they're gonna have a meeting coming up in April, and this would give them direction. So we can hit the ground running with the start of the fiscal year. I think that's key. And I understand there's many projects on here. Some are much larger than others. And so as Shawna's getting to know individual donors and the board and all of us working together, I think that's gonna be key, because it's not just Shawna's job, and it's not just the foundation board. It's, it's all of us, staff at the district, board of trustees at the district. You know, I, I just, I think it's been a great process. I think we've got some good direction. And, but if there is something on here that is causing, you know, concern, then yes, that should be removed so that we know, we can just clear it off the plate and focus on the other items.
Elizabeth, I asked you about the item when we first talked. Free nature seed nursery, free native seed nursery, $10,000. And that was for the, the parcel that we inherited, the five acres.
Right.
And when we talked about that and the board agreed to bring on that parcel, I remember we asked that, if there'd be any associated cost, once we took that parcel on, to do anything. And the answer was no. That, my understanding, and maybe it's, I have a misunderstanding, but it was that the former owner of that property had put seed out there, and he was letting the public come in and gather seed, and take it home and plant in their gardens and yards and so forth. So when I saw the $10,000, I questioned, I thought we didn't have to do that per, you know, Ed's presentation to us, that everything was gonna come over. It was just basically if we as a board wanted to let people continue picking seed, and I remember saying, maybe we would offer that activity to one of our other conservation groups in McHenry County, if they want to take on that responsibility as a way to bond with them. So I was kind of surprised when I saw the $10,000, and I asked you about it, and you weren't gonna get back to me on it.
And I muted you. Do you want to address the focus and how it's got on the list?
Sure, absolutely. Vern, we don't have to put any more seed out there. That was to enrich the area, to put more species there. And one of the reasons it's on there is because there are people who like to donate to that particular thing. We have a program through the, the Big Woods, which also allows you to contribute money directly for prairie plantings. So I think Shawna went over that earlier, and I'm sorry I wasn't in here. I got booted off the internet and took a while for my internet provider to come back on. So I might have missed some of the conversation, but I'm sure she might, may have mentioned that when you go in to talk to donors, you have a somewhat larger list, because you're trying, you're trying to find a thing that appeals to that donor. And while you may have some priority projects, they may not be the priorities of a particular donor. What's on there, more as if we run into a donor, which we often do, whose thing is prairie. So we don't put anything on the list with natural resources that is outside of our normal work plan. So none of the, none of the items you're seeing are projects that are add-ons. They're all part of our regular work plan. And what this would do is allow us to, to fund things that would, we would normally be either taking out of operations, or we would be trying to find a grant for. So in this particular case, this would be the type of thing that we would apply for, an Illinois Clean Energy Pollinator Grant for, if it wasn't on the list for Shawna to fundraise on.
Now, and, and what you may have missed before you came on, Ed, I was just saying that when we agreed to take this parcel as a gift, you know, was there a cost? And the answer was no. And then I saw $10,000 for buy seed, and I was questioning why, that's all. Because I, I think we've purchased this property with, or got this as a gift within the last year.
Yeah, yes, we did. And there are no other associated management costs with, with it. This is really to enrich it so that the public coming in to collect seeds, and the district as well, would have more options for seed on that particular parcel. But if it's of concern to you, you can pull it off the list.
No, I'm just trying to understand, based upon when we had the discussions, except the, the gift, why we would invest $10,000 now, within a year. That's all. Do you see where I'm coming from?
I do, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
So where are we at on this list now? Are we, are we going to make a motion? We had a motion at one point to send it. Are we not doing that now tonight or are we not able to or where are we at on this?
I, I have no idea.
I'm fine to send it unless anybody has some concerns about a particular item. I'm really fine to send it and let the, the foundation do what they need to do. And I understand your, your question, Vern, about the parcel. I think it sounds like it's an additional opportunity that we may or may not take, right? With the $10,000 on that seed.
Right.
Native seed. So that was a good question, good answer, and I think that the list is there and let's just see what we can do with it. Is it okay to go ahead and adopt and move forward on that? I don't see anything else on here. I mean, again, in the end, if the foundation doesn't think they can sell it to the public, they're not going to push forward. I would only take something off if you really have a philosophical difference to it.
Well, I think, I think going forward, if we, if we get going on, down a certain way and we see that something is unnecessary, we could pull it later. We could always, we could always amend this, make it, take something off or add something to it as, as, as we see fit, you know, as, you know, as we say, oh, we're not going to do that or we're going to do this. We, you know, maybe there'll be, already be some money raised for it, which could be problematic, but that, that could happen no matter how big or how short this list is.
Well, and I'm guessing they're not pushing it, pushing out what they think is going to work. So you're right, we can, we can amend later. Let's see what, where we go from it. Let's do that.
The, the other item that's on the list, and as long as we're going to discuss this, is the blending turtle and the owl enclosure, which was added, the last two.
Last two?
Yes.
Yes, I put those on there per our contribution.
Right.
Vern?
I, I had asked, since this was a high priority of the district for several years, and then we were going to do it, but then we couldn't do it even this year because of one of our maintenance people going out on disability leave. Obviously, it was important to somebody for several years. I would like to see it back on the list and I'd like to see it go over to the foundation. I think we're beyond the five and four. I think we need to move into a, because they accepted it at one point. Shawna, if I understand it correctly, since they accepted it, couldn't we turn this into the grant and give them actual dollars that we would now hire somebody outside the district to build this and give it to the Natural Wildlife Center?
So at this point, it would become, yeah, a granting process. Sarah has actually reached back out specifically about the aviary. She thinks that she has somebody who would be willing and able to pull together plans and to build that and has requested the granting documents. At the time she did that, we hadn't had them approved yet, but I could easily send them over to her. She could fill them out with a new cost and send them back to the foundation and I'm willing to bet that the foundation board would vote to move those projects forward.
Right. And the same thing with the blending turtle project?
Yeah, if there was a plan in place, my understanding right now is Sarah hasn't contacted anybody to move that project forward, but if we wanted to get the ball rolling, I could see if she had any ideas on what needed to take place.
Okay, I would like to make a recommendation that if we approve this, that we take these two projects out of this phase of the process and go to the next phase, which is give the foundation a formal grant request.
I'm good with that. That's fine. Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Not a problem.
So with that modification, can we vote this, vote on this now and, and, because I think we've had a very thorough discussion.
Well, you'll need, you'll need another motion to pull, someone who pulled, who voted in favor of it has to pull it back for reconsideration to send the list because the motion was just for discussion.
Right.
Oh, okay. So the motion would have to be, I move to move this project list forward with the idea that the blending turtle enclosure and the short-eared owl aviary, aviary would move forward to the next phase. I'm, think I'm getting this right, I don't know.
Yes, you are. You're doing great.
Move that to the next phase while the rest of the project list is forward as is for consideration by the foundation.
What phase, what do you mean by phase?
Well, the, the blending's turtle enclosure and the short-eared owl aviary would go to the next, it's not just on the project list, it's now moving forward to the next phase for consideration for those specific projects, correct?
Staff would, staff would prepare a grant document to the foundation.
To get that, those two projects that have been out there for a long time, getting those forward so we can move on, get those, continue moving forward and then the rest of the list would move as is.
I think, Lynn, that, I think you could use the wording that's already there, consideration of resolution 2029 acceptance of McHenry County Conservation District Fiscal Year Project List and the moving forward of item number 38 and 39 to the, 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 you know, grant process.
I move for the consideration of resolution number 2029 acceptance of the McHenry County Conservation District Fiscal Year 2021 Project List with the addition of moving the blending's turtle enclosure and the short-eared owl aviary, aviary, aviary to the, what?
To the next, to the grant cycle.
Yeah. To the grant.
Shawna, help us here.
Of the grant level process with the foundation.
Shawna, is that how you want it to be sworded?
Yeah, that's great.
Close enough?
Yeah. I'll know what happened.
All right, you know.
And I'll still second it.
Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, now for the vote. Trustee Campbell.
Well, I have to say yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Henning.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Brant.
Yes.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
And Trustee Scotty.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, one more to go. Item 82, may have a motion for consideration of resolution 20-30 approval of mending position description entitled for the Land Preservation Manager Administration Grade 20.
I so move.
I second. Any other?
Any discussion?
I just have a, I have a question as all. And I'm, I'm sorry that my iPad did not download all the, all the points of this. So I just had a question for Elizabeth. Is there any, any plans to reevaluate this job or to change the grade or the pay scale or anything like that or going forward or is this just a title change and nothing else?
This is, this is as intended. It is, the job description describes what our land administration preservation manager has been doing and so it's a title change just so it clarifies what he does, but nothing's changed. It is the job and that's what he's been doing for the last many years.
Okay, so it's taking effect, the title change is taking effect immediately. There's no plan to change his grade level or anything like that. This is just basically to change the title and nothing else.
That's correct. And the reason why it came at this time is because annually we go ahead and we do clean up and you pass the salary schedule and so it made sense to have it all done simultaneously so I wasn't coming back with different aspects at different times.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, Ian, do you want to do a vote?
Yep, Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Brant.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Henning.
Yes.
Trustee Fritz.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
And Trustee Scotty.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
The next thing is, Elizabeth, do you have an executive director's report or can we move on to public comments?
The only thing that I, I do want to add, we've been keeping you, everybody apprised. We talked a little bit earlier about what we've been doing as an agency. I just, I want to share my deepest appreciation to our staff. I am very proud. We were in front of this before it was moving. You know, we sat at a meeting, Ed, right before a meeting, and I will shout out to him and said, you know what, we ought to start thinking about this. This is coming our way. And immediately we jumped on to create this pandemic preparedness response team that staff rolled up their sleeves and we got a plan together and we've managed very well. This is how we work and operate and I just want to, I am very proud. We've mitigated a lot and I, I just, it's been difficult. The last couple of weeks, it's been, we have morning meetings at 8:00 AM, Saturday, Sunday, our team quickly, they disperse, they do what they need to do. Everybody's, they care very much, you know, being that the outdoors is open and that we're providing a service for the physical and mental health of our community is, is so great and again, I'm just extremely proud. And so I appreciate your efforts to support the staff with earlier movement on our, our bell and suspenders for should they get sick, but they've led the way. And actually tonight, even navigating to this, other municipalities, we're looking at what we were doing to shift to an online format. And so it just, again, I'm very proud and you should be very proud of the staff and I know you are. So I thank you and I thank the staff. Great job.
You're here.
Vern?
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth, and thank the staff also.
Vern?
Yes.
I was, I actually had hoped to be able to say a couple of things and I know it's been a really long night, but I had to, to end on a kind of a positive note and it kind of feeds off of what Elizabeth said. Do I have like two minutes to?
Actually, actually, we can give you three minutes, Lynn.
Thank you.
I'll time you, like we do, like we do presidents. Go.
All right. I do want to thank Elizabeth for the extraordinary job she has done in overseeing the management of this organization during this time of crisis. We are experiencing, what we are experiencing, experiencing is unprecedented and yet, under her leadership, the district has been out front, literally, leading the way in establishing policies and procedures to protect staff, their families and the public to the extent possible in an effort to mitigate the worst this pandemic has to offer. On February 25, her response team that she mentioned was established to prepare for the potential impacts to the district. That was 14 days before the governor of Illinois declared a state of emergency. On the 16th, the district went to a remote workday and implemented strategies for field staff to stay productive while adhering to safety measures and ensuring social distancing. That was five days before the governor announced his executive order mandatory stay-at-home directive. This month, the board meeting is being held entirely remotely just days after the governor loosened restrictions on the Open Meetings Act, which would normally require in-person meetings with a quorum present. We are holding a virtual meeting, which may or may not go without a hitch and I think it's gone very well, but either ways, allowing for access by the public in some ways that is actually better than before. The district's approach also served as a model and a starting point, point for efforts at the county level. Elizabeth would argue, and I know this every time I say something to her, that she, when I compliment her on something, she says, oh, she has an amazing team. She's absolutely right. The district is fortunate to have an extraordinarily professional, highly qualified, immensely committed and dedicated team, which under her incredible leadership thrive to make the district the highly effective, efficient, resourceful, impactful, resilient, nimble organization it is today. I can't think of anybody better to lead this organization during this difficult time and I thank her and everyone else for their efforts. I have one more thing to say, I don't know if Jenny is still on, but very quickly, a lot of what staff does is in the background and they don't get the shout out. As Jenny indicated in her board summary, I did request an addition be made to our policy and procedures manual to address bullying in the workplace. Having somebody very close to me feel compelled to quit their own job as a result of this type of behavior, I'm keenly aware of how important it is to have a positive supportive work environment where employees feel honored and respective, respected. To be clear, the district has long sought to provide this for its own employees, but a willingness to reexamine and enhance existing policy appropriate and shows a willingness for self-examination and growth. We are fortunate to have a qualified professional human resources manager on staff of the district. So shout out and thank you to Jenny for creating this addition to our manual and to both her and Elizabeth for the responsiveness. And then finally, and I don't know if Val is still on, but I thank him for his efforts in the legal review process and his input and his thoughts on everything that was going on with that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you, Lynn.
I'm opening up to public comments, number two. Anybody who's on the call that would like to make the public comments, please give your name and where you're from and make your comment.
Have you raised your hand?
Raise your hand, please, and then I'll unmute you, please. I saw a hand go up. There we go. Okay, I'm going to.
Do we have somebody, Elizabeth?
We do, yes. There you go. I already got muted. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, so you have me, right, Cynthia?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm speaking as a taxpayer and a resident of McHenry County for 20 years. I'm living in Algonquin, again, on the east side. For 11.2, I, I feel that that should have been a very easy yes vote, just as a voter and a taxpayer. I would have been very proud to see that pass through unanimously, only because this, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. We don't know what's going to happen next week and how long it's going to last. And I think it would have behooved the Conservation District to allow the executive director to have that administrative ability to make a call, good, good things close down. I'm very grateful, as others are, that the Conservation District has been able to stay open, but that's not a guarantee. We've seen our national, our state parks close. So I, I just feel very strongly as a taxpayer that that should have been a very easy yes and move on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments, Elizabeth?
Anybody else raising their hand?
I don't know, but I think you need to put Mary and Chad on mute.
I didn't take the tape.
Yeah, it's Mary and Chad's house. Those two.
I don't see them here. Go ahead. I'm not seeing anybody else with their hands up.
Yep. Your motion to adjourn. Vern was on mute a second ago.
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Okay. So John made the motion and who seconded it?
Brant.
Thank you, Dave. All the, Trustee Fritz?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Brant?
Yep.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Henning?
Yes.
And Trustee Scotty?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourning at 8:09 PM.
Congratulations, everybody. You did your first virtual meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Good evening.
Ian, are you staying on for a minute?
I can. Yeah, I can stand.
No, no, I just, when will we get documents? Tomorrow morning sometime?
I don't, I can't guarantee, depends on how long it takes me to do them.
Oh, okay. No, 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 I just, so I can make myself available, that's all.
Yeah, I have to, I have to be a.